Loveland Magazine TV videos are brought to you by the generous support of MoveToLoveland.com.
So we're here today for an appeal. That was, it was a case, this is, this is case 2503, but this was case 2025-2 in front of the HPPC Committee for a Certificate of Appropriateness. At the March 5th, 2025 HPPC meeting, an application for Certificate of Appropriateness was presented for construction of a six-unit residential development at Amrell Road Avenue. The proposed project was to be located with three units facing Railroad and three units facing First Street within the city's Historic Preservation District boundaries, which triggered it to be seen and heard as a project by HPCC. The proposed project encompasses two vacant parcels, which consist of 0.229 acres. In your packet is the draft meeting minutes. We have not had an HPCC meeting since March 5th, so they are draft in your, in your packet. And through that, through reading those meeting minutes, as I'm sure you've done, you'll see that a proposal from Infuse Holdings, specifically the representatives, the Hill family and their attorney, Mr. Matt Curran, they provided the background and the information on what they're proposing. Following that presentation, several residents, for or against the proposal, spoke in open forum, which is also reflected in the draft meeting minutes. The committee, the HPPC committee, took time to discuss the proposal and eventually called a motion. Ultimately, Certificate of Appropriateness 2025-2 was denied unanimously. The committee determined the proposed project was not in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 1328 of the Loving Code Of Ordnances and the Local Design Guidelines. Those are all, that's all part of your packet also. We provided the, the meeting agenda from that March 5th meeting, so you can see everything that was, was presented, as well as the design guidelines. So as part of our code of ordinances, specifically 1328 point 12, which is the Historic Preservation Regulations Appeals Procedures, decisions by the HPPC Board may be appealed to the City of Loveland Board of Zoning Appeals within 10 days of the commission hearing the proposal. No building, permit or own permit required for the activity applied for shall be issued during the 10-day period or while the appeal is pending. The Board of Zoning Appeals should consider appeal within 30 days of proceeding and should utilize the written findings of the Board, Commission and regulatory decision. A majority vote of the Board of Appeals should be required to overturn a decision of the HPCC Commission. Staff received the application for appeal on March 14th from Infuse Holdings. Once again, the applicant, and the full appeal can be found in Attachment A, which is in your packet.
Okay, we've got different people to, to speak. So first, we've got Sherry Hamlin. Should it be just like Eva?
So I will be swearing in each person with their testimony. If you'll raise your hand. I swear.
I swear.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
The testimony that I'm about to give.
Is the truth, the whole truth?
The truth, the whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And, um, yeah.
Say your name and address, please.
My name is Sherry Hamlin, 118 Cannonade Drive. Before I get started on my, what I've prepared, can I just make a special request that when you guys speak, that you move closer to the microphone? For those of us who listen afterwards, we have time here.
And it would help to pull them down. I mean, look at that.
Thank you, we appreciate that. And this is not something that I prepared ahead of time, but based on a comment that was made in advance, I would just like to say FYI, it is a federal offense to put material in a mailbox if you are not personally United States Postal Service. Good evening, members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Very little of what I'm about to say has changed from the first time I spoke on this topic, and that's because nothing about this proposal has changed. This is the same multi-unit development that came before the Historic Preservation and Planning Commission. Same height, same mass, same design, same visual visuals that were presented the first time. It was unanimously denied by the HPCC with clear rationale and strong public opposition, and yet, here we are now. The applicant is attempting to justify this project by comparing it to previously approved buildings down the street surrounded by other commercial properties. That is cherry picking. The HPPC guideline clearly states that the new development should be compared to surrounding buildings, not ones a block away, not ones that no longer exist, and certainly not ones that haven't even been built. This proposal will sit directly next to small cottage-style homes, and it does not fit. Basing compatibility on a building that doesn't exist and may never exist underscores how far they've stretched to make this appear appropriate. The presentation packet, just like last time, includes deceptive renderings that show the proposed complex surrounded by lush green space, mature trees, a visual that is simply not accurate. What those images don't show is reality. Small, single-family homes directly next door and the dramatic contrast this building will impose on the, on the streetscape. At the HPPC meeting, residents spoke loud and clear. The commission members spoke loud and clear. The message was simple. This project does not align with the character of the surrounding buildings, and it should not be approved. And yet, the developer presses forward, continuing to emphasize their philanthropic contributions to the community, but nobody is questioning that. We can agree that this developer has been a great community partner in the past, but this appeal is not now, more has it ever been, about character. It's about this project and only this project. Past merits do not grant a free pass to change the landscape of this community for generations to come. It would be inappropriate regardless of who is presenting. This appeal is not rooted in any new information, clarification of guidelines or procedural error. It seems to be based entirely on the fact that the applicant did not like the decision. That is not what an appeal process is for. Tonight, I ask them to uphold HPCC's decision, preserve their integrity, honor the voice of this community, and show that outcomes cannot be reversed simply by persistence and frustration. Thank you.
Todd Osborne.
Do you swear? Do you swear or affirm?
Do I swear or affirm? Yes, I swear and affirm.
That the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and I think about the truth, so help me God.
Yes. Todd Osborne, 1100 Sunrise Drive. Good early evening. Tonight, I speak and request the BZA to deny the appeal requested regarding 20204 Railroad Avenue. As far back as last year's Historic Preservation Commission meeting on June 26th, the applicant used a certain phrase, "Buildings within a one-block radius." The applicant used numerous buildings in their presentation that were beyond the one-block radius, including outside of the county. Searching to clear my county of order site, I found a probable definitive source regarding the one-block radius to the railroad property. Taking the block in front of the properties on Harrison from Carl Brown to Railroad, from a January 9, 2004 city flat, you will see that one-block radius is defined as 160 feet. Moving south on Railroad from 200 Railroad, you will see the properties consisting of Pickle, 115 Railroad, Hometown Cafe, and Narrow Path. Each consists of 50 feet wide lots, per their deeds. They all face 160 feet of the City Hall parking lots entirety. The buildings are one-user tenant likewise on existing Northern Railroad Avenue buildings within 160 feet are one-user tenant. The applicant's design was denied as appropriate. That lack of correctness did not fit character. Guidelines say to build similar height and design next to the property. It has to match what's there, not the comps shown. Guidelines have been here for a while, several years before the property was purchased. Those words were not, were not mine. Those words were the commission's members, straight from last month's meeting video. Around 70 minutes in, the design doesn't match. It's like comparing Pheasant Hills Third Street or the Heights to Homer Rock. Please follow the correct unanimous vote of the HPCC and deny this appeal. Thank you.
Courtney Hauck.
That is just my opinion.
You're not testimony, that's your opinion. Your opinion is your testimony. I'm sorry.
Can we serve everybody at once?
Does everybody want to stand who's going to speak and raise your right hand, please? Anybody that signed up? Okay. I swear.
I swear.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
Is the truth and the whole truth.
Is the truth and the whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right. Is that okay? With all of that, I think I'm done. All right. My name is Courtney Hauck. I live at 497 Walsh Second Street. The area that we're talking about is a lovely, quaint little city lot. I don't know of anywhere else in the entire area that anything like this exists. It's partially historic, it's partially vintage, but it fits. Everything fits. If you drive through there, it's a wonderful little community. What Hill Construction wants to do is out of place for what's going to go there. The building that he has designed, frankly, is a very pretty building. I wish it'd been built across the hill, so there wouldn't be a loss of it. But it doesn't fit in this community. The City Hall probably made a mistake in allowing this to be torn down to start with. Hill Construction got a little carried away and tore it down before we had ducks in a row. Now they sort of created the perfect storm. They have, lost my notes. They have a difficult time going forward. The developers that are going to be out there, if this is approved, are going to want to do the same thing. They're going to tear the community down. They're going to build multiple families and just go on from there. If, if that happens, then you've set a precedence. The city has set a precedence to allow things to be torn down and to be done. There are very few historic areas left in Loveland, and this is one of the, probably the most unique, and I've already said it in the area and certainly in Loveland. What I would like to see is to have this not approved, which unfortunately puts Hill Construction in a, in a problem because they wanted and torn the house down that could have been there. The appropriate answer seems to be to build two houses, one on each lot, that is conforming to the area and the construction that's there currently, and to proceed on from, from that, and to quit allowing the historic structures and things in that area to be torn down. Thank you.
Deidra Hazelbaker.
Good evening, Board members, and thank you for your time. My name is Deidra Hazelbaker, and I live at 101 Ash Street. I'm here tonight to urge you to uphold the decision of the Historic Preservation and Planning Commission, which voted four to zero with forum met to deny the Certificate of Appropriateness for Toner Road Avenue. The Hill's appeal is built on speculation and frustration, not on evidence. I'd like to walk through some of their key claims in their appeal and compare them to public record. The first claim, we have more support than opposition. According to the minutes, seven residents spoke against the proposal, only two spoke in favor. Public testimony overwhelms the cited concerns about the scale, massing, character, and neighborhood fit. The second claim, the HPCC should have considered buildings beyond just the adjacent cottages, including commercial ones a block or more away. Fact, the design guidelines explicitly state that new construction should be based on the context within the block radius and be compatible with adjacent structures, massing, and scale. The guidelines do not call for picking comparisons across town or from commercial buildings that don't reflect the residential character of the block. Next claim, the project compiles comprised of zoom. It is not. The project still requires variances for density and driveway access. More importantly, even if it did need something that doesn't guarantee a certificate of appropriateness, historic appropriateness is judged by the design guidelines, which address form, fit, scale, and character, not just the zooming metrics. On the next claim, the HPCC unfairly denied the project based on height. The commission's concern about height has been consistent, fair, and documented from the start. When the applicant first filed for demolition of the previous home, the HPCC expressed concern about their three-story, 41-foot replacement. The commission had already repeatedly stated that two-story structure would be more appropriate. The applicant moved forward with this three-story plan despite feedback. The HPCC, the next claim, the HPCC didn't take into account the design constraints of building in a hood lane. The HPCC is not responsible for engineering floodwater solutions. They are responsible for evaluating the design compatibility. Site constraints do not exempt the proposal from design guidelines. Every property has challenges. The HPCC focused correctly on whether the proposed design fit the surrounding residential context. On the next claim, the HPCC may have had their decision held behind closed doors. This one was the most surprising in the appeal. The accusation is baseless and deeply ironic. The HPCC's decision was made in a public meeting with presentations, open public comment, and transparent discussion. The four to zero vote was on record with forum met. Meanwhile, during that same meeting, the applicant referenced support from unnamed elected officials, none of them who submitted public comments or attended. The Hill's also questioned the absence of one of the commissioners, yet voiced no concerns when their appeal lacked public facing endorsement. The commission's review was fair, open, and consistent. Accusations of unethical behavior without a shred of evidence only overruns public trust. The next claim, we want to build something beautiful in the store. I promise you, no one is questioning the applicant's intentions, their character in this Loveland, or what they contribute to Loveland. But wanting to build something meaningful does not make a project appropriate. The HPCC encouraged the applicant to return with a smaller, better-fitting proposal. As submitted, this proposal simply does not meet standards. What's at stake? This is not just about one building. It's about whether we respect the HPCC's, the standards we've adopted as a city, and the integrity of public process. The HPCC unanimously decided with forum present was rooted in design guidelines in which proposal was clearly failing to meet. I ask you to uphold their decision and show Loveland that it values its process and that standards are not optional.
Elizabeth Plus.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. My name is Elizabeth Plus. I live at 127 Light Avenue. I've been following this saga since the beginning. I believe that the community has spoken against allowing the Hill Construction Company to build their six-unit condo, so I don't know what you want to call those. And through everything, yeah, the outside of their picture looks wonderful and cute, but it would be better somewhere else. When I think of this proposal, all I think is two words: too big. I have a picture of how I feel about what they want to do. They want to take three floors, three stories with rooftop access to tower over the nice, quaint residential, single-use homes in the area. They reference other structures in town. Well, let's talk about that. Those structures, well, look at Pickle renovated. Bishop's Quarter and the buildings on Las Loveland that caught fire. They didn't tear those down. They remade our history. Our Loveland theater, our stage company, not a fire. They kept the structure. Those are things that make Loveland special. Even when the city decided that our Nesbit Park needed to be redone, they went through the process of keeping it quiet and fit. Too big. Reminds me of Loveland Station, which towers over the John Hill Construction Building. Every day when I drive through there, it's claustrophobic. You have a cute renovated building, and then you have three stories on the other side of the street. I have not spoken to one single Loveland resident that is happy with Loveland Station. And now the Hill Construction Company is wanting to do the same thing right next to our park. I've not heard from one person that I meet with on a daily basis that's okay with what they want to do to our town. And I know they've done good things in their community. But they also need to understand that if they proceed with building this structure, even after being turned down, this is the legacy that you're leaving. It's not going to be nice. I can tell you that. I'm also going to say that, right now, this appeal process reminds me of the kindergartners at the LCC building, that when they don't like the answer that they get from an adult, they'll ask somebody else until they get the thing right. Listen to your community. We are trying to keep Loveland the cute destination town that it's always been. We do not need this three-unit a six-unit, three-story building on Railroad Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Scoban.
Good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Sharon Scoban. I live at 155 Overlook Drive. At the March 5th, 2025 Historic Preservation and Planning Commission meeting, the members present voted unanimously to deny the applicant's FOI request. Of the nine open-form speakers, seven spoke against the proposal. Several others, including myself, wrote letters of disapproval. I believe the commission acted in accordance with the HPCC guidelines in making their decision. Here are some of the wise comments made by the commission members. The residential block is significant in its uniqueness. The guidelines recommended similar height and scale as to what the project is located next to. They encouraged a design that is two stories and fits within the scale of the surrounding structures. They expressed concern over the project's scale and how it was out of character and taller than all the other homes in the residential area. They said the proposal is too big, and they requested that the applicant consider the residents and committees' comments regarding the massing and scale being larger than any other residential structures. HPP guidelines for new residential construction include, number one, construction that complements the existing historic character. Two, guidelines serve as a regulatory framework for ensuring that new construction occurs in a manner that preserves and protects the integrity of downtown Loveland's historic context. The priority for new construction is compatibility with adjacent structures and spaces, as well as the uses of timeless design principles and quality materials. Site improvement should complement a structure and be compatible with structures surrounding it. One, ground surface coverage, including ground planting and landscaping with surrounding surfaces. If surrounding properties have mostly grassy front yards, retain the grass in the front garden. Number six, when driveways, parking paths, or parking lots are built, they are to be secondary to the neighboring buildings and should be designed in a way to not detract from the character of the district. The number seven, current zoning only allows for up to two, up to a two-family dwelling per individual lot. So in this case, there's two lots, so there could be two, two-family structures on each lot. One could argue that the proposed development does not conform with any of these guidelines. Guidelines that were put in place in 2018, years before the applicant purchased the property. Additionally, the proposed, the proposal would require the city to permanently remove four or five parking spaces on Railroad, and either transfer or sell the property to the developer so that garage and driveways would be accessible at all times. This is a luxury not accorded to any other property in the area. Another problem with the proposal are the front-facing garage doors. This, too, is inconsistent with any property in the vicinity and would be a significant eyesore. The 2022 master plan states the existing character and development of historic residential areas shall, and shall, as Joe knows his mandatory language in the law, and be, shall, and be maintained and preserved. Words like charming, unique, quaint, special, or diverse are repeated in the city's guiding documents as both being informed aesthetically and economically. Interestingly enough, these words are never used by the applicant, and therein lies the problem. While we appreciate the applicant's contributions to the community, it's important that HPPC guidelines and guideline enforcement be handled consistently, regardless of who the applicant is. Special consideration for any developer, no matter who they are, would be improper and unethical. In closing, approving this proposal would send a dangerous precedent that would dramatically change the Cottage District forever. We can and should do better. I respectfully ask you to deny me. I respectfully ask you to deny the appeal. Thank you.
Pat Mays.
Hi, I'm Pat Mays. I live at 1126 Cottonwood Drive, Loveland Highway. I'm looking around to see if anybody's lived here longer than me, and I don't think so because I moved here in 1962. I love this town. I love it with all my heart. John, when did you live here?
I was born here in 63.
All right, you give it, you give it a chance. I lived in high school. Anyway, I love this town. I've watched it develop. I've watched it grow. My husband was a police officer here. I served on council here. I understand the workings. I can't say I'm happiest about the way I'm seeing the building go in Loveland, but as a really smart city manager said to me, these are the developers that are coming to me, and we have to go by the law. I get it. I get that 100%. But I also know that there's a really cool answer that you can say: No. I have the utmost respect for John Hill. Everything that he's done has been exemplary. He has shown his love and respect for the city of Loveland in the things that he's done here. I ask you to not approve this tonight, and I'm going to ask John Hill the very same thing I asked him at the very first meeting. John Hill, think outside the box. Be the premier builder that we know that you are. Show other builders what can be done in Loveland, especially the historic part of it. Make this not about the money. I get it. It's about the money. But make your money somewhere else, but show your love for Loveland. You can shake your head if you want to. You still are not going to get what you want.
Katie Colson.
Katie Colson, Lee, Ron Beartron Drive. I was part of the founding group who wrote the original HPPC guidelines, and when we were going through the process, we recognized that Loveland is an eclectic blend of architectural styles that will build over several decades and reflect the historical development of the city. We decided it was important to embrace the variety of styles for any new renovated property to blend into its immediate context. That is why the guidelines are written the way they are, with multiple references made to design elements, materials, style to complement adjacent properties rather than dictate a specific architectural style for all. The HPPC tabled contents delineate very clearly between residential and commercial properties, dedicating Chapter Four to all residential projects and Chapter Five to all commercial projects. Both chapters address preservation, rehabilitation, and new construction projects. It's very clear on how to distinguish between the two project types. The commercial spaces in the historic district are significantly larger than residential projects, and it was critical for the HPPC to distinguish between the two. There's a diagram on page 46 that clearly describes one of the two and is reflected by the commercial projects on West Loop in Ramsey's, Tonnes, Platten Records. They have large storefront blazing on the ground floor, regularly spaced windows on the upper floors with window butts above the second-floor windows and corners of the blue corner, which is exactly the design M.G.'s holdings submitted, and it was rejected because as a residential project, it does not comply with the residential guidelines. As a residential project, it has to be designed to complement existing buildings in the area and enhance the quality of adjacent properties. John Hill has never considered the adjacent cottages in any question imagery or in any design element in the concept he presented. The building type John Hill wants to emulate for this project is based off commercial properties and design principles that occupy a large mass of the city block. The HPPC gave him ample feedback as to why the design did not comply with residential guidelines but is yet to supply a modified design. I encourage, I also say, I was personally offended at the March 5th meeting when he referred to the cottages as trash. I know we say sometimes things in the heat of the ocean, but I was really offended by that comment. I encourage this planning and zoning committee to uphold the decision, unanimous decision, rendered by the HPPC and decline this appeal.
Ty Ober. Yeah, that's correct. Chris Oberholzer.
Hi, my name's Chris Oberholzer. I live at 220 Bell Road Avenue. I am thrilled to hear so many people say such nice things about this street. We've lived there for about 10 years now and we really love the neighborhood. I am frustrated that nobody from the contractor came to us to talk about our opinions before moving forward. I did not oppose the demolition. I support the developer's right to build something there. I think that John Hill builds a good quality product, and I just think that the density and the scale of the proposed product are adequate. The balance of the block is all single-family homes, not apartment buildings. And I'd just like to encourage John Hill to come back with a couple of single-family homes or something more appropriate for the spot and to encourage the committee to deny the appeal. Thanks.
John Bova.
Hi everyone, John Bova, 1584 Fay Road. I kind of want to address a couple of things. Yes, the people that have spoken talked about there being seven against and two for. Negative speaks a lot louder than the positive. I can tell you, just as someone said, they talked a lot of people who don't like it. There are probably a lot of people who didn't like Ramsey's or didn't like the graders that looks like it should belong in Kenwood. There's probably a lot of people that don't like the roof on Fleet Street, Fleet Feet. There's probably a lot of people that, as I've seen on social media, that have said they've moved out of Loveland because it's no longer a store. For the one, two, 10 people that are frustrated, how many hundreds, how many thousands of people have actually come to Loveland? And with this building, this horrible structure, which quite frankly, if you looked at the plans, is stunning, and the work that they're going to do is going to be brick. Are people going to stop going to Nesbit Park? Because people didn't stop coming into Loveland. They started. I was a Loveland resident 25 years ago before work took me east. I couldn't have been more happy to come back to see that it wasn't just passes. It's a lot of other things. And I'm sure when a lot of these other things came forward, the same people had a problem with it. I'm not a big fan of Loveland apartments. Oh, who, I don't know who mentioned that. Not a huge fan. Doesn't keep me from coming down here. And if you keep talking about cute and quaint. I came down here with my wife. We walked around the cute quaint houses. And then I got by the cinder block garage with a TV on and someone watching TV in the cinder block garage. And now you get to look at the RV behind the slightly burned-down bike store. So I would ask the council, and thank you for your service, I don't know if you've been appointed or voted, that the negativity, whether it's online, it's peak, it's just... There's a lot more negative than there are positive. I don't think the structure, I think it's a buffer, quite honestly, between the historic homes, including the cinder block garage. I don't see the level of anger. I hear people, I understand. Maybe something a little bit toned down. I'm really tired of hearing about the money grab. We all, everyone wants fifty. I don't know where all of a sudden making money became a bad thing. And I think it's important for you to know, the HPPCC had four people there. Yes, it was unanimous, but how do you have a major decision if it's two-two? You have to have, like, I think there should have been five there. So my ask of you is, like, do what's right for Loveland. The HPPC, that's deeper than, like, the 58-page document I did. I did not go through it. And that's a lot deeper than I'm going to get into, and I'll let you comment on that. But I don't think anyone's going to stop loving Loveland because this goes up. I really don't. For all those people who said, "Oh, I moved away, it's good staying..." Whatever, maybe one of the 20 buildings that have gone up. Yeah, for everyone that moves out, a lot of people come in. It is a different town than it was 25 years ago. And I know change is hard, and I'm not going to get into applause, I'm sure. And I appreciate, respect what everyone's saying, and if it's against the HPPCC code, then that's for John and Ben to work out. That's beside the point. I want to address the negativity. My ask of the appeals process, of which someone else commented, "Appeals process is just beginning to change." It's part of due diligence. It's part of the process. They're allowed to appeal. So I have no problem with that. I'd actually look past the negativity because even though it was seven to two, it's probably going to be eight to one today. There's a lot of people who don't have a problem with it, who think the buildings are spectacular, especially compared to the Loveland apartments. Like, they're brick. They've got that red brick look versus what? vinyl siding? Cinder block? So I just, there's a lot of things that are being said. There's a lot of things that have happened in Loveland in the last 25 years. Quite frankly, I think they're awesome, and I think this would be just as awesome.